I'm going to call the council meeting to order. If you could all please stand for a moment of silence. Thank you. If you could turn and face a flag for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands.
One nation, one God, equal, liberty and justice for all.
You may be seated. Clerk, would you call the roll of council persons?
Lehman.
Here.
Podak.
Here.
Cassidy.
Here.
Baker.
Here.
Hall.
Here.
Mendoza.
Here.
Lake.
Here.
We're all here. Minutes from the previous meeting.
I'll move to approve.
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Baker to approve the minutes of the previous meeting. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman.
Yes.
Podak.
Yes.
Cassidy.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
Righty, communications.
I have none.
All right, I do have an agenda correction that I want to make aware of everyone. The fourth piece of new business is redundant on the agenda because it's also the first piece of new business. So we need to cross that out, the fourth piece of new business, for its redundancy. And then we need to add what you receive this in your packets, but we need to add the opioid. Let me see what it is, ordinance, want to see if it was ordinance resolution. The title of that ordinance, which will be the fourth piece of new business this evening. It says adopting and amending ordinance number 2024-105 Permanent 2025 Appropriations. By appropriating from unappropriated funds in the opioid settlement fund and declaring an emergency to exist. That was in your packet. It should have been reflective of the fourth item on your new business. And so that needs to be put in there as the fourth item of new business, and that can go all three readings.
Mr. President, just for clarification, that change is only on the most recent agenda, which came out after four o'clock this afternoon. So if you printed one off before four o'clock, it's correct.
Okay.
So I see some of you looking at confusion.
Okay, so if you have the opioid as your fourth piece of new business, you're good. But if you grabbed one from over there like I did as the most recent version, somehow it disappeared and the first piece got put on as a fourth piece. A redundant time. So, so I think we're probably all, you guys are better off than I am probably because I have the most recent version of the agenda. So is there any questions or confusion on that, or I just made it worse? So, all right, there's that piece.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. And then as we get to the new business, we'll need a motion from the floor to change the word iron trail to iron triangle. So, and that's throughout that entire ordinance. It was written as iron trail and it should say iron triangle park. So. And we'll, I'll kind of remind if we don't get a motion from the floor that we need one to change that officially. And that's all the communication I have. So, report of the committees, the finance committee.
Thank you, Mr. President. The finance committee met on February 11th, 2025 in the city building conference room. Mr. Dandiran discussed February legislation, two ordinances, one appropriating opioid funds and another correcting a 2023 financial advance, which did not require emergency passage. Emergency passage is requested for two measures, the 2025 appropriations ordinance to finalize beginning balances after closing of 2024, and appropriation for the beautification fund to purchase nine benches from a liquidation sale. Committee members discussed the high costs associated with water line repairs. And Mr. Cassidy requested a report from the finance director to be present, presented at a future council meeting. Mr. Dandiran agreed to produce that report. The committee also discussed methods to improve communication regarding future water rate increases, emphasizing that rates are adjusted based on proprietary fund regulations rather than council approval, as well as the impact on existing state fiscal emergency status. No members of the public participated, and the next finance committee meeting is to be held on March 18th, 2025, at 5:30 PM in council chambers.
Thank you very much. Public Affairs Committee.
The Tree and Beautification Commission meeting will be held this Wednesday, February 19th, at 4:00 PM in Conference Room Two at the City Building. There is a records retention meeting scheduled for this Thursday, February 20th, at 2:00 PM in Conference Room Two at the City Building. UAW Loco 2021 Human and Civil Rights Committee is hosting their third annual Black History Month movie night, featuring the movie Red Tails in honor of the Tuskegee Airmen this Saturday, February 22nd, at 7:00 PM at the UAW Hall on North Union Street. This is an all ages free event open to the public. And finally, Fostoria City Council's Public Affairs Committee is hosting their first quarterly convos with council next Saturday, March 1st, at 11:00 AM in the McLean Room at the Kibish Memorial Public Library. This is an informal meet and greet open to the public, and all members of council and those seeking council seats are encouraged to attend. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Law and Ordnance Committee.
The Law and Ordnance Committee met this evening. We agreed to not move forward with proposed legislation regarding leachate as a nuisance. James Cunningham from the public spoke about this as well, and Jill Filiator asked about new event processes. The Law and Ordnance Committee will meet again April 15th at 5:15 here in council chambers. Thank you.
Report of the officers. Mayor.
Thank you. We've completed the cleanup of the leachate from the spill that occurred at Sunny Farms landfill and handled the leachate without any problems. We're going to continue to receive leachate from Sunny Farms. We are working with the Ohio EPA and the Seneca County Health Department on testing of the leachate. And if we are successful in handling the leachate, we will utilize the income from this for three purposes. First, we will not need to increase sewer rates in 2026. Second, we will increase our reserve fund for the sewer department, which is one of our requirements to exit fiscal emergency. And third, we will use these funds to help offset costs to residents who have to change out lead pipes on the owner's side of the service. Under new business, we are asking you to allocate $60,000 of the opioid settlement money to the following organizations. $5,000 to Welcome to a New Life, $30,000 to the Dare Program, $10,000 to the Seneca County Pivot Court, and $15,000 to Hope in Fostoria. This resolution can go three readings. Finally, under miscellaneous, I will be asking to appoint Madison Sterns as the temporary safety service director as Eric Kekler has been out for 30 days now, and we're following the Fostoria City Charter with regards to that appointment.
Mr. Mayor, what was the fourth opioid?
Hope in Fostoria.
Thank you.
Any other questions for the mayor? Did you have anything else?
Yes, I do.
All right, Safety Service, you've got it.
Okay. Under new business, you will see that the first piece is for adopting and amending ordinance number 2024-105, Permanent 2025 Appropriations. I ask that you suspend the three reading rule on this as we continue to adjust the budget for the new year. Steve Dandiran did highlight this at the finance meeting. Next piece of legislation under new business is adopting and amending ordinance number 2024-105 by appropriating from unappropriated fund and the beautification fund. We had a couple of anonymous citizens donate monetary, make, excuse me, make monetary donations to the city after discovering that the Finley Mall was selling their heavy steel park benches. This was not included in the budget, but all costs have been covered by those donations. I ask that you suspend the three reading rule on this so we can get a check cut and pick up these benches this week. They would be placed throughout the city, including at the reservoir to provide additional seating for residents. And then lastly, under new business, the third piece of legislation is an ordinance correcting ordinance 2023-14 in advance to the Chiblap Grant Fund. This is just to correct an error that was made in 2023. The general fund advanced a grant fund $24,000, however, 58 that should have been treated as a transfer. So that piece of legislation is just to correct the error, and there is no need to pass that as an emergency, and it can proceed to go through the three reading rule. Lastly, just wanted to make everybody aware, the city was notified on February 12th by American Forest that we are to suspend all project activities related to the urban forestry grant that we received. This is effective February 20th. Unfortunately, at this time, disbursements for approved payment requests are paused until further notice, and we are unsure if those funds will become available again. Fortunately, the city has not spent any of this money. However, we will be pausing all plans and projects that were related to that specific grant. That is all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we will move into the public portion this evening. We have two people who requested to speak. So we will start with those two people. Deb Tyson was the first person that requested time to speak.
Well, I spoke last council meeting, and it went pretty far. It made it to Tiffin in Fremont because it made it in the paper. And so I was kind of happy to hear that there were some good things said about Fostoria. I still have some misgivings about how we're doing some things, but we have really improved. And so I think we need to keep moving with that same momentum and keep doing things like we've been doing them and just kind of be mindful to always do a check and balance in anything we do. That's all I have today.
Thank you very much. The second person that requested time to speak was councilperson Bob Podak. Will be speaking as a citizen.
This seems strange being on this side, I will tell you. But I want to just go over a couple of things. And I just couldn't find anywhere in the agenda where it was appropriate. And I will be forwarding these two articles to all of you and the mayor and Safety Service Director. The first one's regarding leachate. Leachate and the Review Times and Advertiser, the last article that was in there about leachate and the spill was, if you knew anything about leachate, they did not know anything. It was rather obvious. And I don't propose to know everything about leachate. I know where it comes from. I know how they get it. But this kind of just fills in the gaps a little bit. Leachate from a municipal solid waste facility is one of the most complicated wastewater to dispose of. Membranes and advanced oxidation techniques are usually necessary for leachate to meet discharge standards, leading to the treatment being fairly expensive to reduce that cost. And disposing of the wastewater is only viable and operable. However, pollutants in leachate such as nutrients, of salts, heavy metals, forever chemicals may influence the performance of municipal wastewater treatment plants. Under the determined design and parameters, leachate is a significant source of emerging contaminants, which provides extra input into the influent for wastewater treatment plants. Issues, issues been highlighted in recent years, and more concerns about the emerging contaminants have came up. The levels of emerging contaminants could be reduced by one to two by doing some things that I don't understand. I'm sure wastewater treatment people know, and if they don't, they're going to have to know pretty doggone quick if we're going to be taking leachate. The other article pretty much pins it down and says, leachate is the result of water percolating through the waste deposits that have undergone aerobic and anaerobic microbial decomposition. In recent years, increasingly stringent wastewater discharge requirements have raised questions regarding the efficiency of co-treatment of leachate in municipal waste treatment plants. So I've got two articles that bring up a lot of questions about if we should be taking leachate in. As a citizen, I'm not sure. When I sat over there and the mayor laid out three good reasons for it, I can't disagree with those. But at the same time, we're not dealing with a municipal solid waste facility that the leachate's coming from. We're dealing with a commercial industrial solid waste facility that has taken in many more and different types of landfill fill. Let's put it that way. Some of it, everybody knows, has been contaminated dirt from the East Coast back in the day. The old section that has no liner on it, under it. Everyone said there's a lot of other forever chemicals in there, and there's forever chemicals everywhere. It's in the soil, it's in the water, it's in, in the air. It's not going to go away. It's just a lot of them out there. But my concern is, is that five years from now, 10 years from now, is EPA going to test the water north of town that came from the leachate facility down the portage somewhere and find out that there's things in there that shouldn't be? And who's going to be responsible? Is the city going to be responsible? Is the landfill going to be responsible? Is the, that going to fall back on to the EPA? Is it going to fall back on to the Seneca County Health District when that part of the portage is actually in Wood County? So I've got some questions. Hopefully, we'll have some more answers. If anyone wants to come to the March 1st, Saturday at 11 o'clock, the council, hopefully there'll be some discussion about that. I personally think, I don't really have a big problem with it if it's done right. We just have to be assured that it's going to be done right. The second thing is, is that, I don't know if many of you, over the years, I've been on this side of the podium often. This is a picture of Reservoir Five. This is the one that the proposal to possibly put solar panels on. It looks really pretty when I took this picture. But after I took the picture, I noticed that there's the mountain in the background of trash. So now we're going to take the reservoir and we're going to put solar panels on it, or there's a proposal to do that. Time will tell. I'm only one person. As a citizen, I'm just saying I'm not too sure that's the greatest idea. I don't know if we're all about it for the revenue or if we're all about it for the efficiency of it. I don't know enough about solar to even comment, really. But I think we need to step lightly, and if someone else is doing it, or there's more than one municipality doing it, I fall under the old theory of when everybody else runs, you should walk. So that might be our best bet. Other than that, everybody in this community and all the council, of course, is invited and all the candidates to the March 1st thing. I appreciate your time, unless anybody's got any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Podak. Councilperson Mendoza on clarification, the forum with the council people, is it March 1st or March 11th?
It's March 1st.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure that I had it written down. I had it written down wrong previously, so I wanted to make sure.
It's at 11:00 AM.
At 11:00 AM. That's where I got the 11 at. Okay. Thank you. All right. At this time, we open up the council meeting to any other members of the public that wish to speak. And conditions of our bylaws for council say that we need you to state your name, at least at minimum, preferably your address as well, and limit your comments to three minutes. And also a reminder that it is for you to make comments, not ask questions. So you can ask questions, but we treat them as rhetorical. So it's not a dialogue. Thank you.
Good evening, Jill Filiator, 402 West Culbertson Street. I first want to thank Maddie for answering the questions for me when I had a question about the leachate. She got me into the right department so I could ask my questions. I am very glad to hear that what you plan to do with that money from the leachate. My only concern is, is that EPA rules, and when I ask the questions, I am not 100% sure that we did all the testing before we put that leachate into the portage for the Down Cert. And we know that we are in that federal decree that talks about what we did with the portage water. I will be reaching out to EPA just to verify my question on that one for the safety of the citizens of Fostoria. But I do agree that I think we might have lowballed the price a little bit on, on the treatment, but that's between the city and the people involved in that. The only other thing I have is just a rhetorical little question. I noticed that we are one of three cities that have three counties in the state of Ohio. And I noticed that also we lose a lot of opportunity for not having big buildings coming in because we're not in the county seat. There is an ordinance process that we can go through the council through ordinance changes to create one county. Thought maybe I'd throw it out there. Might be something to look at as we continue to grow. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Joy Walters, and I just have some rhetorical questions as comments. These were shared with me today at work, and I thought I would be worthy to share with you. So, well, personally, I can't believe we're here again with the whole leachate conversation and who we're dealing with. I personally am not comfortable with it, but that's beside the point. So the testing of the leachate, I do know that there was some tests done by our local lab here. And to my understanding, there are six, there were six tests run, typical leachate testing in the past, I believe in 2022 possibly. Forty-two pages long. So what are we testing for? Are we testing again common, ordinary standard tests like we do with our water when we're not dealing with the common, ordinary facility out there? So, and we know the test, the leachate testing is very expensive, so who pays for that? It's only done yearly, but we believe it should be done at least quarterly if we are filtering it. We also believe that it could damage aerobic activity in our system, so who pays for that if it harms our system? If we discharge contaminated water, and this was mentioned before, into the portage, that's already protected area, who will be held liable? Will the city of Fostoria be held liable for that? It runs north, the east branch of the portage, so is that going to fall on us? I know we put a lot of money into the new treatment plant, and that's a big concern of mine personally. I don't live far from it, so concerns are real. We've had really bad experiences. So I think everybody's on the edge of their seat with this. Is anyone going to negotiate a great deal that actually benefits the community or just charge the average price and accept all the risk along with it? And finally, you know, we can't ship that much leachate by truck every day without having a spill again. It's inevitable. And there's a chain of command when it leaves the landfill and it goes in a truck. And if there's a spill on the road, it's a whole different chain of command that needs to be enacted immediately when that happens. And it just seems as though when there's spills or there's accidents, it's just all very muddy with what has actually happened and has it been handled appropriately? So I know there's been a lot of questions, was the leachate actually tested before it was brought to our facility? You can't do, I'm sorry, I don't align with the notion of a visual test. Somebody physically went and looked at it? That tells you nothing, tells me nothing. So with that said, I think the ideas of ways to use the money, the potential money to come in, is always a good thing to hear. But are we just tickling feathers to get approval? So I'm with, aligned with Bob. I think we need to take a step back and move slowly, anything to do with that monstrosity out there. It's a out-of-country conglomerate. They could give one iota about us here. So I think I speak for most people in the city of Fostoria, actually. Thank you very much.
Any other members of the public wish to speak at this time? Seeing none, we'll move into old business. And the first piece of old business is remaining tabled, so we'll go to the second.
No, you're fine.
An ordinance establishing the position responsibilities and qualifications for the position of full-time water treatment plant lead operator for the city of Fostoria, Ohio and declaring an emergency to exist.
Motion to adopt. Second.
We have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Lake to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lehman.
Yes.
Podak.
Yes.
Cassidy.
Yes.
Baker.
Yes.
Hall.
Yes.
Mendoza.
Yes.
Lake.
Yes.
That carries, it becomes ordinance number 2025-09.
An ordinance enacting new chapter 946 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fostoria, Ohio entitled illicit discharge and illegal connection control and declaring an emergency to exist.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Lehman, a second by Baker to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
I have a question.
Sure, on clarification.
Yep. In that ordinance, under F, page three, it says illicit discharge as defined, and it gives the section in code, means any discharge that is not composed entirely of stormwater, except for those discharges pursuant to some permit noted in here. I'm just curious, and I guess it's been researched by someone because it's in our hands at this point, if that also would have something to do with the leachate. And there's also another section under number four, on page four. 4L pollutant means any of, anything that causes or contributes to pollution. Pollutants may include, but are not limited to, paints, varnishes, solvents, oil and other automotive fluids, non-hazardous liquids, and solid waste, yard waste, refuse, rubbish, garbage, which is kind of where leachate falls in, litter and other discarded or abandoned objects, floatable materials, pesticides, herbicide, fertilizers, hazardous materials, waste, sewage, dissolved or particulant metals, forever chemicals, animal waste residues that result from the construction, constructing a structure and a noxious or offensive matter of any kind. So does this ordinance come, I guess this ordinance comes to us from who?
It comes from the sewer department, and I believe they've been working with the consultants, Strand and Associates out of Cincinnati. And this is part of what we're working to get everything corrected for the EPA for getting out from under the, the current order that we're under.
That's, that's how I understand it too. But those two sections that I read, and maybe I'm just playing devil's advocate, but do they know when they wrote this that we're considering taking leachate?
I can't answer that question, but I can tell you that the same situation applies to the next two ordinances as well. I mean, these three came together.
Right.
And this is the third.
They're, they're all to do with getting this out of.
Right.
Yeah. I, I'm just not, um, once again, I'll use the statement, they told, this is what the consultant said. Did they know at the time that we're going to be considering taking leachate? And when you read that section, 4L, um, I don't know. So maybe we need to take a look at these.
Well, that's the reason you get three readings.
Well, and I just, and I wasn't concerned about it till I was, till I was aware that, you know, we're going to consider taking the leachate.
We can continue the discussion, but we do have a motion on the table for a vote, and the question has been proposed. So we do have to vote on this this evening. Does anyone have any other discussion they want to contribute before we take the vote?
Well, I would just say, the legislation, even if we pass it.
Well, I would just say, the legislation, even if we pass it, serves to remedy the issue with the EPA. And then if we, if you, I assume there will be further investigation to make sure that if different ordinances required, that we would address that separately in regard to leachate, because the leachate topic is very new to all of us, you know. I feel comfortable approving, I'm just speaking for myself only. I'm comfortable approving this. The only question is then, can you do leachate with this legislation? But I'm comfortable with this, this language. And again, I'm only speaking for myself because it puts us in compliance with the EPA.
Is there any other discussion before we call roll? Seeing none, clerk, call the roll, please.
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
No.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That ordinance does carry. It's ordinance number 2025-10.
An ordinance enacting new chapter 947 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fostoria, Ohio, entitled erosion and sediment control and declaring emergency to exist.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion to adopt by Mendoza, a second by Cassidy. Need discussion on this one. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
All right, that carries. It's ordinance number 2025-11.
An ordinance enacting new chapter 948 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fostoria, Ohio, entitled comprehensive stormwater management and declaring emergency to exist.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Lake, a second by Mendoza to adopt the ordinance. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Carries. It becomes ordinance number 2025-12.
An ordinance amending chapter 1163 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fostoria, Ohio, entitled required improvements.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Hall, a second by Baker to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That becomes ordinance number 2025-13.
Am I so short, am I down here? An ordinance amending chapter 1164 of the codified ordinances of the city of Fostoria, Ohio, entitled stormwater facilities relating to reference to new chapter 947.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Layman, a second by Podak. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That carries. It becomes ordinance number 2025-14. That concludes old business this evening. Move into new business.
An ordinance adopting and amending ordinance number 2024-105, permanent 2025 appropriations by decreasing appropriations and appropriating from unappropriated funds in the general fund, permissive MVI or MVL fund, Brownfield Grant Fund, CHIP 2023 Fund, and Iron Triangle Park Fund, and transferring funds from the general fund to the Street Construction Maintenance and Repair Fund, and Park and Recreation Fund, and declaring emergency to exist.
Move to correct the language instead of trail, to put triangle in there.
Second.
We have a motion by Podak, a second by Cassidy to correct the word trail to the word triangle in the ordinance. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
Thank you, and that has been corrected to triangle.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Cassidy to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker? Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
The three reading rule has been waived.
Move to adopt.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Baker to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That carries. It becomes ordinance number 2025-15.
An ordinance adopting and amending ordinance number 2024-105, permanent 2025 appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated funds in the beautification funds and declaring emergency to exist.
Move to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions.
Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Baker to suspend the three reading rule on three separate occasions. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Lake?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Layman?
No.
That motion does carry. The three reading rule has been waived.
Move for discussion?
Sure.
Is there a reason?
It wasn't necessary.
Oh, I thought it was. Apologies.
That's all right. The auditor had indicated that it could go through the three reading rule. But if you chose to, it's a correction from 2023. It's not urgent to correct at this time. That's the only reason for my no vote.
I think that's the next.
No, wait, I think you're confused on which one it is. This is, this is the beautification fund. This is the donation for the park benches.
Oh, I thought this was the CHIP Lab.
No, no. And you are correct on the next.
You are correct. That is, that is the next one.
Can't take my vote back. My intention was good.
It's still carried.
Okay. So these are flip-flopped in here? I have the agenda from earlier. Is that? Okay.
In the second line there, it's beautification fund. It's park benches.
Yeah, I have the agenda from earlier.
Move to adopt.
Second. Second.
We have a motion by Mendoza, a second by Baker to adopt. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
That carries. It's ordinance number 2025-16.
An ordinance correcting ordinance 2023-14 in advance to the CHIP-LAP grant fund, whereby the ordinance 2023-14 authorized an advance of $24,000 from the general fund to the CHIP-LAP fund, should have been an advance of $23,950 and a transfer of $50.
That was the first reading of that ordinance.
An ordinance adopting and amending ordinance number 2024-105, permanent 2025 appropriations by appropriating from unappropriated funds in the opioid settlement fund and declaring an emergency to exist.
That was the first reading of that ordinance. That concludes new business. Is there any reason to go into executive session this evening? Seeing none, miscellaneous business, do we need to approve?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to ask council to appoint Madison Sterns as the temporary safety service director in accordance with the city charter.
Make a motion.
Second. Second that.
We have a motion by Cassidy, a second by Podak to approve Madison Sterns as the acting safety service director according to the city charter. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza? Lake?
Yes.
Does carry. Any other miscellaneous business this evening? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Oh, moved. Second.
For the motion by Cassidy, a second by Baker to adjourn. Clerk, would you call the roll, please?
Layman?
Yes.
Podak?
Yes.
Cassidy?
Yes.
Baker?
Yes.
Hall?
Yes.
Mendoza?
Yes.
Lake?
Yes.
All right, we are adjourned at 6:40.